Five twenty-nine and fifty-seven seconds. I'm calling to order this special meeting of the City Council of City of Bandera. All council members are present. City Secretary is present, City Secretary is present. Our future Administrator is standing right there, he'll be joining us here shortly. That being said, I implore the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Would anyone care to lead us in prayer?
I do.
In a case like that.
Somebody was here, I think it was Tony.
Thank you.
Oh, Darcy.
Thank you, Darcy.
Laurie, thank you for giving us this day, Lauren. We thank you for bringing us together. Laurie, ask you for wisdom as we make decisions today and we move together to go forward and make the best decisions for the city. Laurie, thank you for giving us great weather in this wonderful hill country. And we ask you to give us another day on this earth. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I failed to mention that we're in City Hall here at five eleven Main Street on August twenty-fourth, 2021.
Can't you find up to speed? Oh, no, no visitors.
No visitors to be heard. Item four is closed session. The City Council will meet in closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.074. Personnel shall deliberate the appointment, employment, and duties of a public officer or employee to with the employment contract terms and conditions of a new city administrator. David, you're the subject of this, would you like it in open or closed?
Close this one.
Okay, thank you. In that case, five thirty-one, I'm recessing the regular meeting. Six oh six, I'm calling, I'm reconvening this regular session of the City Council of City of Bandera. Item five is action following closed session. The City Council will convene following closed session to consider any action recommended to be taken during the closed session. Council, I truly ask that you confirm my nomination, my point, my desire that we could have a day of commencement. I got all this everything, Rebecca.
I'd like to move to confirm your appointment of David Jordan as the city administrator.
Tony, thank you, Tony. Further discussion? All in favor? All in favor and opposed. Thank you, welcome aboard. Okay, item A, the oath of office for David L. Jordan, city administrator. Do you want to come administer this?
I don't know. I like my home.
No, I was gonna take his picture, but I'll do it after. So I send it to the paper.
Why should we have this stick in the background?
Well, we can make that happen.
Yeah.
It would be good.
Thank you, Jerry. Get in, get in.
We're gonna put that in the background.
Where are we going with that?
I'll pay for it if I break anything, okay?
Oh, my word.
Oh, nice.
As you administer, you're the square someone.
Gosh.
Yes.
Well, it's tall.
Not yet. It's going to be, apparently.
Jerry, how much more that gets the wall behind them?
Just leave it there after this.
That's the one coming along.
Yeah.
If you know what I mean.
So this is the oath of office.
I knew what you meant.
Yes.
There you go.
And the name and the authority of the state of Texas. If you'll please read that.
I, David Jordan, do solemnly swear affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of city administrator of the city of Bandera in the state of Texas and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state and of the city of Bandera. So help me God. I do.
Thank you. Welcome to the team if you'll sign here. All have American and...
Darcy, go.
It's a blue pen.
Mine is too.
It is a red one.
This is mine. It's all have blue.
Black if you rather.
No, it doesn't matter. I like blue just because it stands out.
Okay.
With the blue.
Well, legally, you always do it blue because it's copy you can turn it over.
So, Mayor, Mayor, I just realized, on the resolution, it said city manager, not city administrator, at one point when I read it. And when it was sent to us, an email, and I was gonna mention that in the closed session, but I forgot. Somewhere down.
I can fix it if it needs to be fixed. We'll start tomorrow anyway.
I didn't think so, but I would just wanna mention. I figured it'd be easy, but.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Somewhere down by the signature or something. Yeah, see where it says, um, three of seven, says printed name, city city manager. Down by where you sign.
Are you in the ordinance?
No, I'm on page. I'm on the resolution.
Especially on this page seven.
The administrative professional.
The square seven, the shaded page seven. Where it says printed name, yeah, it says city city manager.
City city manager. Yeah, that came from...
Good catch, Tony.
It doesn't matter.
That's from Langford. And all of this has to be redone anyway, the blanks have to be filled in, so I'll put a little checkmark by here to be sure and do that.
Yeah, there's stuff that...
No big deal, I just wanted to mention.
Eagle, Eagle Lake, Texas, probably doesn't need to be in there.
You're correct, right here.
Okay, that is an upcoming agenda item.
Yeah, we'll get there. Okay, item A, number six, discussion of possible actions on following items. Discussion of possible action to approve an ordinance amending the Bandera Code of Ordinances, Chapter One, General Provisions, Article 1.04, City Officers. Division Two, City Administrator, Section 1.04.034, Removal or Resignation from Office. If you remember when Dan was with us last week, he recommended that we change our ordinance to reflect our contract, and that is what this change is.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Rebecca, second, Darcy's second. Further discussion? Mr. On favor? All in favor and opposed. Item B, authorize the administrator to enter into a contract with Langford Community Management Services, Inc. for administration of the American Rescue Plan Fund project for the city of Bandera. Rebecca.
Move to approve the authorization.
Thank you. Darcy's second. Further discussion? All in favor? All in favor and opposed. Item ten, workshop. Discuss the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. Item A, discuss the 2021-2022 comprehensive fee schedule. I know from our previous conversations that one thing we need to do is to add a transfer fee in our fee schedule and to amend our ordinance to reflect that said G is on bond with the city secretary. So when...
That was for utility. Is that what you're referring to, the utility accounts?
And I apologize, I didn't hear everything you said, I was...
Okay, let me, let me show you. Let me find what's there.
It's on page...
Page seven.
Page one.
Or section...
What?
Seven eleven?
Twenty-one.
Yeah.
I was pointing at it, I was like, what? Oh, section seven.
Section seven.
Looking at the top of the bottom.
It's actually page twenty-one, yes. I was talking to David about this before the meetings, and we have the water disconnect fee, the water connect fee. So we would have the transfer fee, which has come up. If y'all would like to decide a fee, David, what was it? You told me about one hour of labor of a city employee's time or something like that.
Right, that's what I was thinking regarding who has to go out and reconnect, and then the paperwork needs to be done. Whatever the administrative portion is to get that transfer done, just maybe one hour's worth of time at that rate would seem reasonable.
Do we have a time that we, for anything else? I mean, I know shipping for the Department of Public Works is like eighty dollars an hour. Do we have a, do we have a rate that we use for something else?
No. When we do service calls, if you, because it's usually, you know, the city utility, we just send out a truck and whoever's on the truck. So we don't have an hourly rate.
In the transfer, uh, do they actually physically need to go out there and reconnect? I don't know.
No, not reconnect, have to read the meter.
So somebody has to go read the meter then?
The water connect fee, is there more or less administration to do with the water connect fee versus the transfer?
I'm trying to think of the number.
So we know where the water connect.
Okay. So, I would say that we would look at a rate lower than that, and we know about what our employees are making.
Well, I was thinking twenty-five, actually.
I was gonna say twenty-five.
Because that covers the administrative end and, you know, transfer it over in the system, then somebody go out and reading. So I don't know how y'all feel about that, but plug that number in.
I think it should be thirty-five, just like the...
You think thirty-five?
I think, because it's, we use the thirty-five for the other ones, right? I mean...
He was saying there's less work involved. They don't have to go on site and actually connect or disconnect.
There's less, okay, but you've got for the, so a turnoff is a read the meter, turn it off out in the field, and then they shut down the account here. A transfer, a reconnect is the same thing. They start up a new account, they fill out paperwork and everything, and then they go out, they turn the water on, read the meter, and get it. So if you transfer it, you've got two accounts in the office that you're dealing with and only a meter read.
One does it.
So you've gotta take, turn it off in the system, you've gotta take, take that one down, put, plug it in there, and then you gotta add it on the other one. So, I mean, it's not that much of a difference. I just feel as though that it's easy to make it the same fee.
That's fine.
Really two employees' time, the office staff and the personnel there, so.
Okay.
So that fee would fall to the person who is getting the new account.
Starting the new service. Yeah, you don't pay to terminate your service. You just terminate your service and pay your final bill.
Pay your billing bill, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and then we will draft language to, to amend thirteen point oh four point oh oh five B, which is the transfer thing.
You won't if it's being transferred.
And bring that to you. What do you...
Maybe a little bit of confusion on the...
So the triggers, so the triggers, somebody's disconnect, somebody's...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, Tony.
So, the triggers of this is somebody's disconnecting and they don't know who's going in there. So they just wanna turn their water off, they're leaving their service, that's a disconnect. They pay a fee of thirty-five dollars. If somebody comes in for new service, they, they connect a brand-new service or they're transferring one that's already in existence to their name. They pay thirty-five dollars regardless. And the person disconnecting in a transfer does not pay anything. They just, it gets moved out of their name. Okay.
Cool.
I think we're all on the same page.
Well, thirty-five dollars will amend the ordinance to be back where it goes. Jared, did you have a question?
No, ma'am.
Okay, y'all wanna start back at the beginning? That's the only thing I knew we really needed to, yes?
Well, I don't wanna skip over administrative fees if anybody has any there, but I wanted to talk about animal control.
On page eighteen?
Yep.
Okay, let's start at the beginning of the fee schedule. Okay, use me.
Okay. I don't wanna skip anybody if you have comments on administrative. I wanna go to animal control. I spoke with a community member who's really interested in the way some other cities around us handle like, um, catch...
Catch and release.
Cut and release, re-release, I don't know what the, but it has to do with the cats. The cats.
Cats, bayne, neuter, release.
Yes, something like that. I don't know, I just heard of this, so I don't know what's out there. I don't know what's available. I know that a former city secretary had gotten a grant to help run a program like that at one point, but if there are any...
I can help with just that part.
Okay, well, just as it's related to this specific workshop topic, just let me just say that if there were anything that we needed to, to fee that could be earmarked for that type of program, I'd be open to suggestions about that.
So, I know for a fact that Bandera falls under the grant again, because we had fallen off of the one in Burnie, in Kendall County. So they, they do have, as part of their grant, they cover Bandera County again. And so it's like a twenty-nine dollars if we catch a feral cat and take it in. But, you know, you have to organize it, you gotta take it in and pick it up, and they cut their ear, and then you re-release it where you found it. And so I do know that for an actual fixing, that we do fall under the Kendall County. So if we could get a program here that would support that, that, or facilitate that or whatever, I think that would be a good move.
So, the cost associated with that, you would have your city employees potentially designated to that. We have someone in animal control, and then, and then transportation fees at the twenty-nine dollar fee. So where's that money gonna come from in, in the budget? Because I, when we get back to the budget, to that line item, I was hoping to see us put some money into that line item for a program like this. I just don't know, I wouldn't know how to...
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but I believe that we don't really have a designated, we get animal, very few animal control calls these days. Sandra Schott does a lot for us, and we have talked about supporting her in ways because the county does support the city, and we have never really donated or stepped up or done any, we've talked about it, but we've never done that. So this, I agree, that if we have some sort of fee that we're using, you know, involved or something, then we, that should go to them. Sorry, Kristen.
Oh, okay. So Sandra, if it is picked up in the city, she will not take it. She cannot assist, because I've done this, which is why we foster, because she says, please don't put them in the pound because our pound is so horrific in the city. She can't really do anything because she's supported by the county. So she can give us direction of where we can go do things, but she can't herself actually take something from us if she knows it was picked up in the city. The catch and release has to be in a live trap and has to be brought in a live trap and goes out in a live trap. So you can't crate it or anything, it has to be in the live trap. And it's a designated day of the week. So it's like, if it's Wednesday and they wanna know on Monday how many are coming Wednesday, where are you trapping them and keeping these live cats for four or five days? Which is a problem I've run into because I take these cats to Burnie for this program. And so it's hard to catch these cats, but... She really, she can just give us guidance, but she can't really do anything.
So she's done step under her, she's got a nonprofit as well, under Saving Shelter Strays.
But she has to be very careful on crossing the line.
Maybe we should get her to come and talk to us. You think? Would it help? Because I'm totally uneducated when it comes to this.
Well, we do, we do a lot of it, so, and I've been working with her for years on this, so that's why I kinda...
Can handle.
Yeah. And Tony does too, because Tony does...
May I see that?
I'm sorry, what kind of cost are you looking at? Are you looking at juice?
Thirty dollars for the spay and neuter thing, and they notch the ear, and they give them a rabies shot, and then you turn them back out.
And the logistics of, then the other...
Yeah, but it's on you to do it. Yes, so we, it would have to be our animal control person load up four of them and take them over type thing.
Which we don't really have.
Right, and so I guess under the grant, can we potentially get a vet?
That's where they go.
That would get in the programs here, so we don't have to go to Burnie?
It's COVID, and then just those that are...
Otherwise, I know it's about a hundred dollars now. And we have no animal control fees?
Suzanne?
Yes.
I don't know, there's a lot of cross-talk going on, so it's hard to keep up with what's going on. But I do wanna say something while I have the floor, please. The last time a citizen repeatedly came to me about this problem, I checked into several grant possibilities, and the city didn't, like, to pay the twenty-nine dollar fee. The city did not qualify for any of them. One of them was through Petco, but it had to be a nonprofit organization that applied for the funds in both the grants I found for specific cat population problem. And I never found anything that, that we qualified for, so, as a city.
I know that Sandra has the nonprofits, I'm wondering if she knows about those grants, but I don't know, well, I'm feeling...
Okay, which one, guys, first?
I think I...
You were.
Hi, Rebecca. I just would like to see, I, I know that I've heard Marshals discussing going out on calls for animal control service calls. So I don't know why we're not seeing that in the budget, but some cleaning up of the accounting, I think, would be a good step one, so that these monies that, that we are charging fees on can start to possibly build up and be dedicated for that.
Well, we had, at one time, we had tried to impose these different fees for keeping an animal in the impound, but it got to be where it just wasn't, they just abandoned the dog, and then we have the dog left, you know, so...
That's my understanding.
Why don't we try and raise some funds through donations? And I'd be willing to kick that off.
Well, we as a city cannot take donations, but I mean, you, you could go out there and create an event to make donations.
Let's not try to reinvent the wheel. We have a really strong nonprofit that we could do, I mean, we could figure out...
Yeah, I don't know what's available, sorry, we're starting throwing stuff out there.
Maybe we can figure out something that we can do with her.
So I, I know that these two are educated about it, and that's great, and I'm very excited that they're educated about it. I would like to donate money to her, for sure. But I really would like for her to come speak to us, especially if we wanna dedicate some city money towards that or towards the program or get whatever. I need to be, as a city councilperson, need to be educated about it before we dedicate some city funds to it. I personally am more than happy to dedicate some of my personal money and donate it to her, but before we do anything with the city budget, I definitely need to be educated some more on it. And I would like to do that, so if we could set something up with her, that would be great.
I am one hundred percent behind Rebecca, though. If we're going out on animal control calls, we need to figure out how to account for that and how to charge the fee and account for it, and it go in the right box.
And in fact, we, we don't even have anybody who's designated as animal control right now.
I know, but that, that's an internal issue.
I'm with Darcy, as I'd mentioned before, I would like to see her come in and talk to us. Educate us a little bit.
I've got an email, so shoot an email. Okay, what else, ma'am?
I don't have anything on this page, I don't think.
All right, are y'all happy with the part fees?
I am.
Tony.
I'm happy with the fees, but I'm really not happy with the way, the overall, how it works.
Well, for right now, let's just talk about the fees, then we can discuss about the whole how it works at a better point.
Oh, wait, ten dollars? I thought it was five dollars.
No, we went to ten.
County residents are five. Jimmy has ten.
Boy, I...
Out of towners.
What's wrong, sorry?
I did not know that.
My memory, I'll tell you. I thought for sure, I thought, that citizens of the city didn't have to pay.
They don't, they don't.
Am I missing that on here?
County residents.
Well, if it's not a fee, it's on the fee schedule.
County, county, not city.
The previous councils who...
We don't pay, the county does.
Okay, where does it say that?
There's no fee for it.
There's no fee, so they didn't say free.
Okay, so they didn't list it. Okay.
Okay, great.
I mean, you could say general admission, non, non Bandera's resident or something.
Right where it says free with disabled vets and BiSD and city residents, we could just add it there.
Because, yeah, the confusing part there for me was, we've got a five-dollar fee for the Bandera County residents, and I thought that we had no charge for the city.
And actually, it's, actually, it's utility holders, it's not residents, it's utility holders.
Okay, good enough.
Okay, special events. This is something else we never apply, we don't seem to, we get parade permits, but we don't charge for street closures, we don't charge for cleanup, we don't do all this other stuff. So this is another thing that needs to be fine-tuned.
So, I do have a thing about the parade application fee. I just feel as though we really only, because isn't that just for nonprofit, like, people that aren't nonprofit? Isn't there some kind of caveat now?
Oh, yeah, but it's free for nonprofits.
So, so we've got one parade that is organized, that draws the biggest crowd in town, that's a nonprofit, and he's created the hugest event, and we charge him a hundred dollar. I just, I just think that's, I don't, I just...
Well, Tony, we have to account for the overtime on the weekends, putting out the barrels, getting down the barrels, cleaning up the streets, blah, blah, blah.
And my point is, that one hundred dollars is not gonna cover that at all. Not even for one, and one of the four or five that we have is the only hundred dollars we're collecting. So I feel as though there needs to be, there needs to be some other, I mean, I'm not saying don't charge a parade application fee, but maybe everybody should pay an application fee, or maybe we should come up with some other way to compensate for the things that, that the city expenses on, because I feel like it's kinda odd that we put this on there as if we're charging every parade, which we're not, we all know we're not. It's, I think it's odd.
Rebecca?
I, I'd be comfortable just removing the parade application fee, and if you need to evaluate the staff, the labor cost of, then evaluate that and charge it to every parade, because we can't give away labor to any organization. Am I, am I right about that?
I agree.
It would be a gift of public funds to give services away to any organization, correct?
Yes, and as an alternative, what they could do is they could apply to the EDC because they're creating economic development with this parade, getting people to come to, so they could apply as a part of EDC funds to, to compensate for, for some of those prices that they're being charged. But I agree, if we're gonna do anything, it needs to be, that, that one hundred dollars once a year by one person is not covering what we, what we put in there, and I think it's kinda crazy.
Yes, Jared?
Yeah, but we, we generate a lot of revenue, or a lot of revenues generated from the parades. Anytime we have them, and I don't know that, like she was saying, a hundred dollars, what's that gonna do for us?
Even if we decide that, that it costs a certain amount of, you know, of city staff and funds or whatever, if, if we get something to quantify, then, I mean, you know, the, the sales tax increase, I mean, something, you know, we gotta figure out something, we gotta quantify it first before we, I mean, but...
What are you basing a hundred dollars on?
This is silly.
Okay.
What's the cleanup deposit? Who pays that?
Well, theoretically, he who closes the street pays a hundred dollars to have the city crew close the street, and then if he doesn't clean it up and the city has to clean it up, or we go pick up trash along his street while it's going on, that's what that's for.
So that's just for a street closure, not this highway when we have the parade?
For a special event street closure.
Okay, for a special event street closure. Okay, no?
So the cleanup deposit is charged when there's the events at the courthouse lawn?
No, because they're a nonprofit.
This is completely confusing and not clear.
That's not a street closure.
Well, it, it doesn't say street closure under cleanup deposit. It just says under special event.
Yeah, so in other, I'm sorry.
That's also accounting.
So in other words, when do we, when are we actually charging it?
Never.
Okay.
If we're not doing it, we need to get rid of it.
I mean, you asked, ma'am.
Right, right, and that's why I'm, I'm just going, because I'm sorry. I'm going back to the last parade where we had the gun that was shooting, the confetti everywhere, and everybody got very mad about it. And you paid to clean that up. We did, which now we, as the, now the Chamber of Commerce has banned those from being in any parades that we conduct. They're no longer allowed to have confetti guns in a parade, that the chamber's supporting.
Man just suggests that we allow the staff and the city administrator to evaluate this section of the fee schedule and let us know what the recommendation is, because we could talk about it all night.
I'll second that. Yeah.
Moving on.
Thank you.
These are all pretty much project, project based, except for the actual application for the permit. And these project fees are based on...
I have...
Set by Bureau Veritas, yes, Darcy.
So, work done without a permit, I just wanna make sure that I'm correct about this. Before we charge a fee, I'll call it a fee instead of a fine, I, I think it's a fine, but, you know, we'll go with fee. Before we do that, are they given some type of warning to...
Yes.
Okay. Yes, they are.
I just wanted to make sure.
They go out and inspect and then stop whatever's happening and say, you need to get a fee, we don't, we give them a chance before they.
Do we, do we have a?
Thanks, Tony. Um so on that it's, it's a little bit, to me, it's a little bit unclear if that's, if that grace is gonna apply to everybody no matter what, no matter if they're rude, no matter if they're disliked, no matter what the situation is. Um, so that's, that, to me, that's, there's a little bit of muddy water there. Um and the other thing I wanted to say is, I happened to look on the, and I could be missing something, but I looked on the website today because like if I'm doing something at my home it doesn't appear very clear to me from the website whether or not I should be getting a permit, you know, so I'm I'm hoping and and I'm curious to know and hoping that maybe with the, with the the new documents from uh Simple City, new master plan, new chapter fourteen that some of those processes are gonna be included and more clear for the citizen. Um and that we want to make sure that all of these permits under construction are um are still relevant. Um and that, I I don't know, I I I would think at some point um that since our chapter fourteen development codes are changing, that that might reflect changes here as well.
Do we not have posted that, do I need to get a permit?
That is on there.
Is it? I didn't see it.
Yeah, if you, the website's confusing, that's why we're budgeting for a new one, so um. I don't think the website's confusing, first of all, and there's a, uh you click permits. No, you click permits, and now there's the permitting page.
May I, may I continue just real quick?
Yes.
Thank you.
I just wanna make sure we're staying on the fees.
It, this is related to the fees, thank you. Um it is not clear whether or not someone needs to the permit tab does not bring up that information. So, that's how it's related to the fees.
Tony, have your hands up.
So I would like to see associated with the fees that um I would like to see that everyone come in regardless of what they're doing on their house, even if they're putting off a fence, that they come in and get a sign that says, I've checked with the city, you know, like the thing that I've got my permit and they're supposed to have it displayed in the window. I don't, uh nowhere has it ever been in noted that there's a fine or a fee by not, for not displaying that. Um I know that that's kind of a bigger conversation as to because I think that, you know, people get all in or rough about the fact that you know, that people don't know like for instance, if we empowered our Department of Public Works, that they're once, once a month, they're or they're driving around the city all the time, if they see construction or something and they see a permitting sign that they're, that's supposed to be displayed, then then they move on. But if you don't, then they need to report it back and it needs to be a fee associated with it, because every permit needs to be displayed.
Well, can we get away from the process of how we're gonna figure this out and just look at the fees themselves, I believe?
Well, there's not a fee for that on here.
We're driving around looking for a fine.
I'll give you an example of how it could be interpreted looking at this. So I'm looking through here for, let's say I'm gonna build a storage building. It's not a new home. It's not a commercial building.
Is it a portable building?
So I would say, okay, well, it's not listed on here, so I guess I can just build that without a permit.
What do you, why do I?
That's a portable building, I'm not talking a portable, I'm talking, say, just a building to put your stuff in.
A shed?
Yeah, a shed. But where it may not be.
Yeah, it's on a slab.
Yeah.
Being a slab.
Yeah, do, we really need to have a permit for that, number one, but but more importantly, back to the fee part I would look on here and I would say, okay, it's none of these, so anything else must be okay. Is that wrong to think that way?
Well, then we could add, because those, those portable buildings and a building that's constructed has to meet the setback requirements, has to be.
Oh, well, sure, you're always gonna have that.
They would have to come in and
I would think it's just that.
And check with us. Darcy?
I would hope, but.
I, I see it as being under residential construction as residential addition or remodel. And that's where I see it.
Start a conversation.
Yeah, I know, I must've got the same text everybody else at the table got. I just had her head up.
If I could just say with me real quick, since I'm here every day and I hear these same questions every single day. Almost every person in the city that does something calls first. And they get all the information, we email them a packet that says what you need, somebody wants to put up a fence, they, we know right away. If it's taller than eight foot, you have to have a permit. If you wanna add something onto your house what are you doing, let's look at it, we'll send somebody out like we had today in several circumstances and see if you need a permit or not. These people call, they call, every single day we have people call. They ask the questions because we don't really have a good system, you know, like, other than this. So they are calling and we do have an active code person that's going out and looking and if they don't need a permit, we're not making them get a permit. Most of these fees are taken from Bureau Veritas, like these are the things that they inspect for. So if it's not one this, then they don't inspect it.
Jerry.
And that goes back to some thoughts I had prior to a lot of this. There's some of this that I feel confident we should be able to to permit on our own without Bureau Veritas.
And we do?
Some stuff we do.
There's a lot that we don't, that we could be doing, I feel.
Well, that's, I agree with that, for budget standpoint, I mean, let's, let's make that a project, and then if we need to redo the fee schedule in a couple months, when we do that, then let's do it, but I don't think we're gonna accomplish that now.
I agree with that.
But I do think, do you think there's a lot, a lot of room for growth?
Yeah, instead of, I'm sorry, instead of giving
And and a lot of opportunity for money, yeah, income, income.
That's all I was gonna mention too, is that I don't think any of this should be just a wash, because there is staff time dedicated to to what's going on, right? But I don't know what it should increase to at this point, without, I I'm missing information to make that kind of determination.
Jill?
I, I'm on page twenty, are y'all, have y'all moved on? I would like to discuss the vendor fee, vendor permits for the nonprofits, they're free. That is a lot, very time consuming. These things that they have at the courthouse lawn, every you know, every other, the first Monday of the month. Most of those are nonprofits and they're free, and the city spends a lot of time doing their paperwork, doing their stuff, getting them together, and you know, I understand they're nonprofit, they're, they're making their own stuff, like anybody that hand makes something, they don't pay a permit. They, you know, make whatever, it's handmade or homemade goods, they're not paying a fee. And we have somebody that spends like a whole day getting these vendor permits ready for them to pick up for these things at the courthouse lawn. Yes, they're homemade goods, but they're making them themselves and they're making money on them, and we're doing work, staff work.
Yes, not a nonprofit.
I would, I would request that they have to pay a fee as such work, even if it's the ten dollars. So, you're not talking about nonprofits though, that's the cottage industry waiver that I'm, no, I'm talking about vendor, under vendor, the nonprofits. What what I'm, what I'm saying is that the, the people who are making their own handmade crafts um they're, they're exempt, they're currently exempt from the permit fee because of the cottage trades. And I don't know if that's statutory or if that's local. I don't know either, but if it's not statutory, I would suggest that there be a fee because there is work and time involved in it.
So there's twofold, I mean, we are, do we know for sure these people are claiming their sales tax? Are we, you know, is there a way to, to get them to produce a, or to prove that they're paying sales tax? Like every time they reapply, cause I know in Warrington, like you can't even get a vendor, like that whole huge thing. Like they will not reissue you a vendor permit, whether it's free or not, unless you've proved that you've paid your your sales tax and you check that box that you're in their county and you're paying their part, proportion of your sales tax. If you're collecting and submitting it to the state, then they're not even giving it to you again. So, so we are getting something out of it, it's just not coming to us directly. If they're doing that, and so that would be my argument.
That has been one of the, the reason we began implementing these fees is because we had no way, until the legislature changed it so that these folks have to pay to the county they're working in, selling in, not the county that they're living in. There was no way to track it, and that's why we're paying with these fees. Rebecca?
Um on the cottage industry folks, who, and again, I don't, I can't tell you offhand if that's in our local ordinance or if that's um local government code. What I would like, Jill, personally, and and counsel for you guys, I don't know if you agree or whatever, let me know, but for our farmer's market, that's on every, uh or every Thursday. I would like to continue to not to exempt them from the fees. If they're bringing I agree. Produce from their, from their vegetable gardens, um and and goods that they're made, those cottage goods and those farm goods that they remain uh without permit. The whole different process than what I'm talking about over here, yeah. And I, I have. They have a little form they fill out that's just for that thing, they have to sign a waiver for the city, that, you know, all that, so. And so, just to continue, I really think that the handmade crafts you're thinking of are not necessarily nonprofits.
No, they're not nonprofits.
They're just, they have been exempt in the past because of the cottage industry fees.
And I believe that is in our ordinance and under the vendor, that the definition of what is permitted, permitted, not permitted. And what is not, and I can't for the life of me, I can't tell you what it, where it is right now.
I, I would say if they're selling taxable items uh that we should require proof of documentation that they pay sales tax, number one, that they're registered to pay it. How we would prove that they actually paid it, that you can't. But I think we should make a requirement of the permitting process uh to see their sales tax certificate.
Their sales tax certificate.
You do? Okay.
That's part of the process.
So so, like for Labor Day, isn't like one person collecting all this stuff from the vendors and giving you a list and don't they, not all of these vendors are coming to you individually?
Um, just depends on what week it is.
Okay, because I, I'm just, I know who was handling it before and now it's being turned over to.
We don't get stuff to the last second, so.
Mm-hmm, because we don't know to the last, okay, so that was.
Rebecca.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tony, you hit your head up first.
In some cases where you've got repeat vendors, would it, would it be more helpful to have, get them an annual?
We do suggest that. It would be very helpful for them and us, but.
And and the fee would deter that, because if you gave them an annual for, you know, for fifty dollars and you charged them twenty dollars every month, one would think that they would start doing things more efficiently.
Yes.
Or even say your annual one's free, if you, if you apply for that one and, and, but we're gonna charge you twenty dollars if you do it monthly. I mean, it's like.
Well, just like the market days, you can buy an annual permit, April through November, for market days for a hundred dollars.
Well, that's what she's saying, she said, but they don't do that. The ones that, the ones that do the handcrafted ones don't pay a fee anyway, so they're not out anything. And so they, they're not encouraged, they're not encouraged to do it more efficiently.
It's costing time and, you know, we're printing on the color ink, it's cardstock paper, I mean.
Or holiday weekend.
Yeah.
Rebecca?
I would just suggest making the change under the section on vendors where it says nonprofits, free. Change that to Banderas Farmers Market vendors. I don't know, you might have to clarify that that's only for your produce and your, your baked goods, because you don't want people showing up with like random.
Yeah, let's, let's look at the ordinance and get back with y'all on some, some different options on how.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that uh any of the true charities, uh Girl Scouts, any of those type of organizations I I would like to see is not charged.
Well, that's a nonprofit.
Lions Club.
Well, yeah, but we're distinguishing here which ones. And that's why I'm saying any of the, any of the charities.
Any nonprofit, no nonprofit pays a fee.
Sorry.
What we would be doing would be adding another line to designate.
But I don't know that all charities are nonprofit.
I think this is all in the ordinance, not even.
Well, but the ordinance, I don't, but the nonprofits don't pay one. You know, they, they provide all their paperwork, they have the whole thing there and blah, 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 so they don't pay. Now, if it's, you know, blue sky on Tuesday and they can't, they don't have the paperwork, then they don't get a non, a free one. Darcy, have your hand up.
I did, now I forgot what I was gonna say, cause I my brain went in another direction.
Yeah, I just, I misspoke, I I didn't mean to insinuate that we start charging nonprofits. I, I think we need to clean up the ordinance with the cottage craft.
She brought it back. I was gonna suggest that we look at the ordinance and maybe have our city attorney look at um the law and see what it says as far as the um handmade goods go, and if we can charge them a fee, um then we should. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that um they're supposed to be actually showing their sales tax um license. Um I know even uh as part of a nonprofit with the Lions Club, that we have our sales tax um stuff, and we are a nonprofit, but we still have our sales tax um deal, so. Uh and we post that, so.
So the permit could be free, but we could have a processing fee to encourage annual versus monthly. So if that, I mean, if the processing fee for an annual is the same as a processing fee for a monthly, then you know, then they're not exempt from that. And so they're not, the, the handmade ones come in and they get a permit and they pay one processing fee of five dollars or ten dollars or very minimal. But if they did that every month for twelve months, then that would be more. I mean, you know, that they would benefit from it. I don't know, I mean, we would, we would have to get that confirmed, but but it's something to think about, it's something to encourage efficiency, is all I'm saying. Cause people don't care that they're putting you out, especially if they're not paying anything.
Okay, moving on down the road, we done with vendors?
Yeah.
Okay.
There was something.
Jerry had his hand up.
I hadn't really put any thought into this before, but man a hundred dollars per horse.
Annually. No, 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 that's for the carriage, that is when Fonda Freeman had the carriage here and we developed an ordinance and a fee.
So this isn't like the Cowboys on Main guy?
No, 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 this is under horse drawn carriage.
Okay. Okay.
We're on page twenty.
So we don't charge? That's my one, number one question, we don't charge the Cowboys on Main for that guy that rides around.
I'm, my hearing aids and they're talking to me.
That's the type of carriage.
Like I can hear them. Just go turn off my phone.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Her phone's ringing.
What is happening?
I didn't hear it.
I'm sorry, I, I forgot to turn my phone off. Um, okay, we were on the horse drawn carriage thing, what?
I'm moving on, did y'all still have stuff on horses?
Okay.
So zoning, um where it says appeal from administrative decision. Um, that's two hundred fifty dollars. So, I'm just gonna give us an area, there has been in the past where our staff has given invalid information. And so, if someone comes and appeals, they pay two hundred fifty dollars to do that. If they find out that they are accurate and they are right, then our citizens are going, or do we give that money back to them in any way, shape or form if they feel as though they, huh?
Jill's nodding her head, yes.
That, we do, okay. So this is more like a deposit, right, just a file for the application.
Detainer, okay, great, retainer.
Retainer.
Yeah, retainer, that's better than detainer.
I'm like, it's my feeling so.
Right?
I've had the same issue before with, with Tony, and I just think that sometimes there's, there's no one scenario that's gonna fit all of your situations, but there have been times when when citizens have gone through this, like while we're, while we're in the process of amending an ordinance, or we, they end up pointing something out that we need to amend in an ordinance, and here they're out all this money, and I just hate to see that happen.
Yeah.
At all. Um but, yeah, I don't know.
Darcy?
My two cents with that would be, and and I'm in the same boat, I mean, oftentimes I don't just have an extra two hundred fifty dollars to throw around, but.
For a five hundred dollar. For a five hundred dollar shed.
Um, yeah, but my, um, my two cents is that if you don't have some sort of fee, why wouldn't everybody appeal it?
Absolutely.
I would, um, well, okay, I wouldn't, cause I'm not, well, I can be an ass. But, um, uh, I probably would if I thought there was any chance whatsoever for the appeal to go through. Um, but a lot of people would just appeal it because why not? There's no consequence for appealing it. So, why not? And then, um, we're out the staff time, um, for preparing everything and going through the appeal process. So, I think there's gotta be some sort, whether it's two hundred and fifty dollars or not, but there's gotta be some sort of fee involved, so I'm totally up for.
So, moving on to the next one. Okay, so Marshal Department, some of those fees under there I would think are, you know, kind of fall under other things too. So, is this because, is this from an accounting perspective, Marshal's Department? Cause I would think that our standard copies for, for the city, if somebody came in and wanted a copy of their bill or we wanted to, they wanted to fax something that doesn't have anything to do with the Marshal Department. Like the standard paper copy fax, CD, all those things, those are falling to the Marshal Department. I would think those would be a standard fee across the board.
No, these are done in the Marshal's Department by the Marshal. If they want a copy of a ticket, if they want a copy of a, of a, a police report, if that you, you know.
Okay.
That is the law enforcement end of it.
Okay.
Yes, Jerry?
And directed to Jill. Jill, aren't a lot of these fees set by the state, the maximum that you can charge anyway, right?
I know, we're record test.
We, we should be confident that we know that we're at least at or below the state fees, right?
Yes.
Got it. So, I would consider these reasonable charges on that stuff based upon the state charges.
What? No, I'm just waiting for water taps, chipping.
Well, do we have input or suggestions from Public Works Department?
These are the new water tap fees that are on here. The tax went up a little bit from last year, so what is on here is their recommendation.
How can we just round them? Why are they got weird numbers?
Well, the sewer taps and the water taps.
Okay.
Why are they weird numbers? Why can't we just round them like everything else is?
Well, he gave, they gave these estimates, so you know, we wanna round them up till they.
Yeah, let's do that.
I just took, we took straight what they gave us, so that's why they are different than any of the other ones.
And with, sorry.
Suzanne, Rebecca, uh, Darcy has her hand up?
Darcy?
Um, so I, just for, um, because everything else is zeros. Uh, I would like to see that if it's, um, over a point, uh, if it's over fifty cents, I'd like to see it rounded up if it's.
Yeah, we'll round them, round them.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll round them.
No problem, we'll do that.
Rebecca?
Um, so I'm grateful that we have the suggestions, but it's also, I mean, I'm not seeing the increase because I'm not looking at last year's rates.
Now, when did these come in?
Uh, during budget with Terry Bird.
Okay.
These went directly there, I, and I didn't see those prior to this meeting, so I didn't know they were on here.
Yeah, I made a bad assumption that these were not changes, but occurs, yeah.
Right, or current.
Well, I think where I got confused, it says twenty twenty on here and here we have the new numbers here, cause that's a big pretty old number.
So, are these new numbers or are these the same as last year?
These are new numbers that were received from Public Works during the past administrators' time here.
When Terry Bird was preparing the budget, he did the, the start on this budget, he used these numbers to figure out.
He worked with Public Works to get these numbers.
Good point Rebecca, I would definitely would wanna see what it was last year or currently.
The change.
How much changed, you know, how much are we going up?
We can get those for you for the next portion.
Okay.
Rebecca?
Is this the only section that's reflecting proposed numbers?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't even think to ask that.
Mine were just gonna be suggestions, like the pavilions and the vendor permits and those kind of things. I didn't change anything else, but that was changed before I followed.
Because these things are influenced by the cost of goods. I mean, you know, the things, the things that they have to install. So, that's good that they reflect the new ones.
Okay, we're down to utility rates.
Two.
Yes, Rebecca.
I mean, since I don't see it in front of me, I'm assuming nobody's looked at the utility rate study? Or do we have that on hand?
We were, David and I were talking about that today, uh, the utility rate study goes through twenty twenty.
Oh. Is that it? Well, but we still had a suggested percent increase that we selected which tier that we were going with and.
And what it would generate.
We did, we've been jumping all over the place Rebecca, we didn't do the, we didn't do the add the capital, uh, basically, we didn't raise rates at all last year for anything.
It was trash, huh?
These are last year's rates and you'll see that.
I think y'all talked about not raising them, but you ultimately did.
Uh-uh, we didn't.
No, we did not.
Uh-uh.
Actually, we did not.
Add objection to it, a lot of people showed up.
There's the zero percent all the way through it, that's the way it ran, last year's rate.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I, I would like to see what Rebecca was referring to, we had that last year. It gives you a feel for if you were to raise it, we don't know that we're not gonna need to yet, do we? I mean, we've said that, but.
Well.
Go ahead.
Go ahead Rebecca.
All I know is that when the, when the company came in and did the utility rate study, there's a clear recommendation
Right.
in the industry, in municipalities, that you have to increase, you have to increase the cost at a very slow rate from year to year. Because what had happened in the past is the city had never increased rates and then they'd made like a twenty percent jump. And that was really drastic and that was really hard for people. But by making, there were, there were suggested paths to follow in that study that said, you know, if you wanna do small incremental changes, but the, this is, this is how you repair things that break. This is how you put new pipes in the ground and, and build new wells and keep up with the demands of the system. Um, because over time, those costs increase and your aging infrastructure, um, you know, becomes irrelevant and, and you know, breaks and, and this is, this is the means that, that those things are paid for.
And not even to mention the cost of increase, just in the last six months, we've seen in the, the supply and demand and, you know, it's like, I mean.
Well, shall we add that to the list of our administrator's projects for the next couple of weeks?
I would like it.
Has he signed yet?
I'm looking at it.
Yeah, he has.
Okay, as long as he's put his signature, oh, he just, he took his own, okay, we're good.
Who was that to put that together?
Um, I remember them, the rates going up and maybe I'm thinking of the year before. But I would like to see, um, if, Mr. Administrator, if we could pull the rates from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty and see.
Yeah, we've got those.
Could you like five years?
Yeah, even the last five years and see what we've, um, increased as a city. And I'd like to see, um, when the flat two dollar street repair rate, street repair fee, um.
What did we call that?
Tax.
The right of way.
Was added, um, cause I know I was highly upset about that, right? Uh, I do remember that. And so, um, I'd like to see that though on paper when that was added and then in the last five years of.
That went in last year, I do believe, well, this, the.
The right of way fee.
The right of way fee and the, the, the object of that money or the use for that money was not to go fix the roads. The use for that money was to repair sewer cuts and, uh, right of ways where we did taps or repairs or that sort of thing. And that's what that money was set aside for, to do a proper repair, not some of this halfway done stuff that we've done over the last few years. Which leaves, you know, like the do-do-do things.
Well, let me tell you my perspective as a citizen. We did a really, I'll say we, because I'll take ownership now as a council member. We did a really crappy job of pushing that information out to the citizens. Because as a citizen that, that came to every meeting or watched any meeting that I missed, I missed that. Cause when that two dollar fee came out, which I'll call a tax, because I believe it's a tax and I'll say that until the day I take my last breath, um, I was highly upset and I remain upset about that. Now, if it was for those things, I probably could have swallowed it a little bit easier. But when it comes on my bill every single month and I see street repair fee, I remain upset every single month when I see that. So, we need to do a better job at getting those messages out.
Well, you know, actually, if you look at the budget, and I don't want it comes as the street repair, but it is the street right of way fund, which is what was established with that two dollar fee per account. And it is to repair properly the easements, the right of ways and the streets that are disrupted when we make a, a cut.
Well, I know that's what the state says the money has to go for, but I'd like to see that that's what the city actually is.
Well, it's commingled though, how can you tell that we took this twenty-two thousand to fix that piece of property, that cut right there?
As a citizen, exactly.
Well, or anything else, you know, all the money's commingled.
Transparency.
Well, unless we set up a, an account for, bank account for every single line item, how would we track that particular line item?
Why not? Why not do it?
Well, I don't know, that'd be like four hundred bank accounts? Come on, that can't happen. Rebecca?
Um, okay, so, one, I as a citizen am happy to pay the two dollar a month fee to keep up, keep the roads in good repair. Um, number two, I would think that in the expense section under streets and public works, that you would reflect that exact dollar amount coming out. So, while it's not in its own budget, that, that you would see that money being used for that purpose. Um, and then the other thing I would just maybe add as consideration, if we can look at the total dollar amount, um, collected for this specific fee, then you could potentially get rid of it if you added that on to the fees for the taps and the sewer lines and those things. Um, but that, I don't know how.
Yeah, included in, like if they're getting a sewer tap and you're having to repair the, the street.
Right.
Increase the sewer tap as a whole project as opposed to just a.
But wouldn't, but we.
You got what I'm saying, right?
I understand what you're saying, but wouldn't necessarily know the cost at the time the tap is applied for.
You know that you're gonna have to repair the streets.
Wait though, wait, wait, you missed this part. You know how much you're collecting annually in this two dollar per account fee? So, that, you, you figure that amount and you figure out, oh, never mind, you're right.
Not that.
But you don't know how many.
You had me going.
New taps, you can't base it on new taps, cause you don't know how many you're gonna have.
Mm-hmm, you're right, you're right.
You couldn't even guess, do a good guess, so.
Right.
That's another reason that we did, why we did last year.
Per tap, if you, I mean, if, if the tap requires it to go across the street or requires street repair, then that's the tap that you charge it to, not every citizen in the city.
I, under, okay, I get it.
But.
That, it's a project thing and it, and you can say on here, if like required, required street repair due to tap fee. And then.
These.
By pat.
These cuts are not just for taps. In fact, that's probably very rare that we are cutting the road for a new tap.
So, what are the, what are the other?
All the taps are already out there. These are for repairs on a leaky line, like the water lines, when they get where they're leaking. I mean, you've seen them out there, I'm sure. They take their high drill excavator and it's, a lot of it's our own issues. I don't know where else to recover that from, is the problem.
In a case like that, would y'all like to let David go to work? Let's see, in a couple of weeks, next week we have a.
Gosh, let's just, have to do it all, here. I'm just kidding.
Works for me, you can change this one. Rebecca?
On garbage rates, do we have any, um, reason to increase those from Republic? Are they increasing?
Yes.
What do you think?
Yes, they increased the, um, this year according to contact, uh, increased it three point four percent.
I was gonna say, it's usually at least three percent.
Yes.
You can, you can bet on it, at least three.
I'm canceling my trash service.
Yes, three point four percent.
And that's across the board or commercial and, is commercial at a different rate?
I'm saying that I'm.
Now, three point four five percent.
How much, sorry?
Three point four.
Three point four five percent.
Okay.
Total.
And I'll echo like what Rebecca was saying last year when all this stuff came up. You know, I really wish there was, you know, we could, and I, I know they said that we can get smaller containers, but they can't reduce the prices. I mean, last week, my trash was half full because I had a bunch of bombos that fell when we had that big storm. But other than that, I had a half a bag of trash.
Yeah.
I'm one person in my house.
Typically, I'm like one bag of trash a week.
And that's how I am.
You know, it's just, it's.
I pay more for trash than anything else.
Yeah.
It's across the board residential and commercial. I just read the paper, just so you know.
Yeah, I really advocated against this contract renewal because we had another company that had a lower rate. They had recycling options, that's another thing, and I'm sorry, I'm going off a little bit. But for the service that we're getting, we really wanted to see other options for our, not only our single folks, senior citizens, people who just don't produce as much garbage. Um, and, and we were also supposed to be seeing some opportunities for recycling in the city and that has yet to happen with, with Republic. Um, so, I mean, obviously, we'll have to reflect the increase, that's, we have to pass that along to the consumer. But, yeah, I don't know what else to say about that.
Sure.
Yeah, and, uh, I was also involved in that and, uh, the way it turned out was very disappointing. You know, we were looking to at least get some honest rates back and, uh, we weren't able to achieve that. So, I was supportive of you on that, if you remember.
Yeah, during that timeframe, that was one thing that you were.
In all these years, okay, let's move on, Christine.
So, on the commercial, um, are the Airbnbs all charged commercial rates?
I, we need to get that on the agenda and fix that.
That's another one for another day.
That is some.
Are you seeing how much trash some of them generate?
We can, we can put it, we can put it on the future agenda for discussion.
Anything else?
No. Not from me.
I have a question.
Uh, would you entertain a motion, Mayor?
No.
Your turn.
Um, the rates, when did they go into effect?
October one, twenty twenty-two.
This, up this way.
Okay, Rebecca?
Move to a chair.
Jerry seconds, discussion, all in favor? Toni? All in favor, I'm toast, seven twelve.